You're other, you good? Are you good Dana?
I'm in.
Alright. Well, why don't I just go ahead and call the meeting to order. Alright, and the first thing that we need to do is we need to have a motion to let trustee Jamil attend remotely.
Move.
Okay, moved by trustee Browski, seconded by trustee Chris Meyer, I think that's a roll call, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, voice vote, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Alright, you're in Dr. Jamil. Alright, all rise for pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Alright, welcome everyone. Very dark out there, it's what, the second day of fall, is that what we have here, third day of fall? Amazing. The first things on the agenda we have are the homeowners association. Is there anyone from a state of Oak Hills number two?
Yeah.
Oh, you guys, yes, yeah. Do you have anything for us this morning? This afternoon, I mean, whatever it is, this evening? I'll get it right eventually. Nothing, okay. Alright, well, thanks for being here. And is it Oak Hills number one?
Number two.
And two, okay, is anybody here from Oak Hills number one? Alright, well then, I guess that covers that, I guess now it's time for public comment. Any public comment in the room? We'll start right there, please speak your name and address.
I'm Chris Platt, I live at 3634 Driftwood.
Okay.
So, I got this on my door today, didn't see it till 5:30. I live on the lake and own part of the lake.
Got it.
So, we've gone round and round with CFI, I've lived here for over thirty-two years. You guys didn't want apartments, we were with that. You guys didn't want baby houses, which we were kinda okay with. You wanted to keep it in an office building because of the tax base. We're talking nonprofits, no taxes. Are we concerned that people living on the lake, we don't want them on the lake? You know, how can we be guaranteed that? I know they don't. Of course, but they still owns fifty feet around the buildings. We want guarantees. You know, dorms, kids, is it gonna be electricity? Are they gonna wanna add more? Or, or, it's coming, so. We might want a little bit more notice than a couple hours. We feel the neighbors are like we're getting thrown under the bus for this, especially the ones that live on the lake. So, that's my comment.
Yeah, but let me, let me do one thing, so what's happening tonight is the initial presentation to the public, and if the board is good with it, it would be referred to the plan and zoning board of appeals for a public hearing and review and everything. So, there's no decision being made tonight except for, does the board feel like this is something we wanna refer to the plan commission for further study?
Basically, should it go through the process or is it so dead on arrival, it should not go through the process?
Correct, and the thing about, the good thing about them coming out door to door and telling you about it, is you're here tonight and you know about it.
Should've been before today.
Well, tonight is just the initial, it just got put on the agenda and it's the initial, hey, we're gonna, you know, should we do this or not, but it's not the public hearing or anything like that, it's just we're gonna get an initial presentation. The board hasn't seen anything yet, you're gonna see it with them first time, and we're gonna go from there. The other thing is that it's, there is, because we're long growth, we don't levy a property tax, so there's no, you know, there's no tax coming from the property right now as it is, and it doesn't really change if it's non-for-profit, it's gonna be the same, so, at least from the long growth standpoint, so, thank you. But thank you for being here and thank you for the concern. Alright, who had the next comment? Please, right there.
Evening everyone, my name is Ted Goodley. Back there, my wife Corina and daughter Penny. Just wanted to come here to make public our opposition to the development plan on the lot south of Sunset Foods. We do not believe that a truck stop would be in the best nature or best interest of the village, and we have a petition with over six hundred signatures opposing this development plan.
You're presenting that petition tonight formally or?
Not formally, we plan to present it next week when the vote would be taken.
Yeah, so the, it's before the plan commission, it's at a public hearing, so right now, you know, we're, we can't really comment on it tonight, I mean, it's not a truck stop, but that's, I'll say that, but it's, it's before public hearing, so that, you know, that'll be the place to bring that comment to the plan commission at their next meeting.
Yes, we'll be there.
Okay. Thank you for that, yeah.
Chris, are you aware of that, and is the public hearing scheduled for this room?
We need a larger space.
Yeah.
I think.
There, and I think that there may be a continuance of that hearing until November. There's still some materials that have not yet been submitted, at least that was as of this afternoon. So, I don't know if that's changed, but if it has not, I think that it's likely to be continued. And so, for, keep an eye open, it would be on the agenda and on the website, right Chris?
Yes.
When does the materials need to be in, what, ninety-six hours, like ours, or?
They have almost everything in, and there were some things that they needed to deliver that at least when I spoke with Chris and Karen Stonehouse this afternoon, they had not yet been delivered. So, I don't know if they've come in since, but if they haven't been, we'll have to tell them that that's gonna be kicking over to November.
It should be released on Friday, the agenda.
Thanks for being here.
But keep posted on that.
I think it might be helpful if we explained the process. That it's, right now, it's the planning and plan commission, planning zoning board, they meet, they ask questions, they give information, they need the data, they make a, then they make a recommendation to us, which we can accept or reject or change. They meet, they meet usually on Tuesday night.
First and Thursday.
First and Thursday, and we're on the second and fourth.
Understood, yeah.
Tuesday, Thursday, so just, some people don't understand what that process is.
Okay.
And they look at, they look deeply at a limited set of things. So, we look at everything, they look deeply at a limited set of things, does that make sense?
Yes. Yeah, I guess just wanted to let.
Thank you.
What, we've, I guess, discovered within the community?
Thank you.
I was gonna get you.
Thanks for being here. There was, who's, Benjamin? Okay. I may have missed you, we'll come back to you.
Hi, I'm Beth from Madison, from forty-three fifty-nine Oak Creek, home owner, homeowners subdivision. My question is, has there been any updates to the special use application for forty-three fifty-nine? I'll make way to you.
No, there is none.
Thank you. I know that we'll go here next, yeah.
My name is David Schumer, I'm the HOA president of Bridgewater Farm in the backs of the fifty-three and Shaffer. I know you heard from one of my board members, Rob Peterson, I just wanted to say that I did the same thing with the quick trip. In the recent edition of the Bridge newsletter, it said that we're going ahead with the saying of long growth, long growth is uniquely long growth, the quick trip does not seem like it's uniquely long growth. It may seem tight outside of what long growth should be. I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you for your comment, appreciate it. Right there, yeah.
Steve Bernstein, I'm out of Bridlewood HOA, I've been here many a time, I've stayed here, but thank you guys for your help with my privilege and all the other. Second his point, it's interesting in telling how many people have now shown up to this meeting to bring up their concerns over the quick trip. It's one of mine, though it's not the main one that exists, I came in. But I don't believe that that quick trip is in any, anyone's mind as a vision of what long growth should be, whether it has a hotel, whether it has that business park atmosphere along with it. There's already two gas stations within a quarter mile, and every single resident I have spoken with, as well as people who are in developments at that corner at fifty-three and eighty-three, in Buffalo Grove, are opposed to this as well. So, I think there's a lot of sentiment against this, and I think it's telling that something that you all should be aware of before it even gets to your ears. The other thing I was coming to ask about was this, the mulch factory that is illegally and illegally operating off of that tickets of road is a business. They've been doing so undefeated, I've seen the bay of trucks coming in and out. You know, I live in Bridlewood right across the street. They haven't stopped, they continue to have giant piles of mulch that come in and out with giant trucks, they do all sorts of other gravel work, and they do have about a larger farm than they ever had before with these pumpkins, but they're operating a business, it's an atrocity, I think, to, to long growth and residents anywhere near it. What is the, where are we in the planning with, they were supposed to be shut off as of October first, last I heard, with the resolution that's signed and the order. I just would like to know what the update is.
Chris, can you take that one?
Yeah, they've been, they've been sent multiple letters notifying them and reminding them of the requirement. So, if they, they don't abide by it, then it goes through our typical code enforcement practice, and it'll end up at adjudication, and adjudicator judge will determine, you know, fines and penalties and, yeah.
If I documented every day, I saw trucks going in and out more and more, I probably should've done that, it would probably help the case, but. So, as of October first, is there something that they no longer run business still, or is that, you know, they're still defending will until they get a court injunction or something?
Yeah, the mulch component of it is what was restricted there, so that would be, they have to work down to the acceptance ordinance, which is here. So, yeah, so, I'm assuming we'll get a call from.
Well, no, so Vic, or help me out here, but this was, they were allowed, it was an allowed use, so what, what we could control was the size of those piles, right? And so now they're, you know, those piles are not conforming based on the ordinance we passed, they have to be very small. So, that's what we're going after right now.
October thirty-first.
Thirty-first, okay.
It falls under our general zoning, well, actually, this wasn't, this is our general village code requirements, and there's a maximum seven hundred and fifty hour a day line.
And it was supposed to be in a certain, whatever date, and then?
October thirty-first, I'm just pulling up the ordinance right now, October thirty-first, as Chris said, is the last day before they have to have it into the conforming size, and the conforming size is a hundred square feet of a lot may be used, and then there's also sizes as far as the, the height and location. So, it's somewhat dependent on the location on the lot that would determine the size that could be allowed.
I might have been incorrect, in my recollection was that it had to be at whatever level it was as of when that ordinance was signed, and if it could go higher, it could only go lower from that.
No, that was for the, right? That was from then on, and then?
It wa, it was not supposed to be enlarged, it was supposed to be, it was allowed to continue through October thirty-first.
And then it had to?
And then it had to get down to the standards in the ordinance. Was never to have been increased.
Until October thirty-first.
They were allowed to be at that level, whatever that was, okay. That's what I just understood, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments in the room, please, yeah?
Hi, I'm Brian Southern, I represent life and divine Christian church.
Yep.
Fifty-one oh five Harley Heights Road, some of us are here. We did not receive legal notice, so we know, some of the other neighbors we gathered with tonight have shown us envelopes of Bridge email, didn't come to us, so we've only had a few days to respond. I think in general, we probably agree with what we hear so far, but generally we'd like to have some.
To push up, yeah, yeah.
We'd like to have some input to the process if, if some developments are happening, it's part of the impact on the five acres we have that bucks the property.
Yeah, if they're adjacent to that property, it should've gotten noticed.
Well, I think I saw in the petition email or the website, I saw, I think I saw a comment, I don't know if it was you that made a comment on the, on the website, so I saw.
Change.org?
Yeah, change.org, yeah, I saw it. That was you, okay, got it, I saw it, I saw your comment. The first I saw it was, I looked at it yesterday, so.
Can we expect, you know, notice?
Well, how does it? The mailings went out, we have all the certified copies.
But they didn't do enough, they only did four.
Four certified mailings?
Mm-hmm.
I have stacked, but we went out three hundred feet.
Okay, the mail lady told me she had four. What was mine?
Alright, so the, will there be additional notices going out for the next meeting, or?
No, mailings are required unless we have to re-novice it, but it will be posted on our website on the, so. Like I said, Friday, the agenda will come out for the plan commission meeting, and whether or not it's gonna be continued or on there, it will be written on the agenda that way.
Maybe we have the opportunity to see if our, our address is somehow listed for the future.
Yes, of course.
Great, and who would I talk to?
You can call village hall tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will leave it in. It's on the S U T H D R.
Thank you.
Other comments in the room? Oh, Jane, how are you?
Fine, how are you?
Good.
With wondering in light of what happened this past weekend with the vandalism, have you discovered anything? Is there anything going forward in the process? I know supposedly there were people caught on video, were they caught on video actually doing it? You're kidding.
We just see groups walking in the front of village hall. Some heading away.
I have pictures for you if you want, but, I mean, because you, I know you saw it, but Doug took pictures now that it's all boarded up, and it's worse, seems to be escalating.
Lieutenant Kaiser's, yeah, Lieutenant Kaiser's here, Keith is gonna.
Yeah. So, we have video, again, it doesn't show damage being done, but we, the video appears to be, it's a busted damage. So, what our detectives are doing, every day, school resource officers at the local high school. Anybody who we identified.
This one took a lot of effort, they took out a piece at the bottom of a solid wood door.
This, this video looks like the kids were throwing rocks.
Rocks wouldn't have done it, I got, I got some pictures for you if you want to take a look later.
They were bricks, they were bricks.
But, I mean, a whole section of a thick piece of wood was.
And it ripped out the frame.
The frame is in pieces on the inside.
Unbelievable.
The last time was during festivals.
Yes.
If that's a common denominator, and what I was gonna suggest is maybe for next year's festivals, it's part of the application.
I move in, I move in.
I got a big tent.
Yeah, really, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
There's a lot of traffic and parking that happens at the schools and people walking over here, so maybe if we could put a condition on the organizers to have maybe a security guard over here controlling just not just all, but also the school and stuff, there's a lot of people that get out there, kids are playing in the park, background in school, that's how I suggest for next year's.
Thank you, thank you.
Is it daytime or nighttime?
People were around there, I guess, at eight-thirty.
Yeah, it was still, it was dark.
On Friday.
Alright, thank you for that, I'm sorry, yeah.
Three times, three times in four months, it's getting kinda old.
Thank you. Yes, he can't, he can't, he's not, he's eligible, so. Alright, any other public comment in the room? Any public comment online? Alright, now that we're gonna move to the next item on the agenda, it's the public safety report. Looks like Lieutenant Kaiser's been commandeered.
It's the fire department.
Well, we'll start with the fire department, sure, any, any public comment?
No, we haven't.
Okay. That didn't work well, go ahead. Keith, do you have anything for us? No? Alright, any, any other questions for Keith? Thank you for being here, I know you had to like, I don't know, arrest somebody on the way, I have no idea what you did, but thank you. Hope that worked out, so. Alright, the consent agenda, there's several items on it, approval of the August twenty-twenty-four treasures report, approval of the regular board meeting minutes, consent twenty-twenty-four, approval of the applications for license and waiving the permit fee to conduct raffles by Country Meadows PTO on October twenty-third, those are the three items. Does anyone wanna make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
Okay, so, moved by trustee Browski, seconded by trustee O'Connor, roll call please.
Trustee Browski.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Aye.
Trustee Riley, she's not here.
She's not here.
This morning.
Yep, so, motion carried, right, yeah?
Can't, not.
Or can't, no, can't, can't participate.
Can't participate.
Yep, everyone, you got all yeses, right? Yeah, motion carries. Alright, now the moment everyone's been waiting for. This is the presentation by Dayspring Bible College for the purchase and renovation of Salem Lake property at the former CFI Industries headquarters. Jim, you're gonna come up and, Scudder, you're gonna come up and, the presentation, or I think I have a PowerPoint, right?
Right.
You want me to move to the PowerPoint?
How can it run? Is it?
I'll, I'll control, I'll, I'll control it, yeah.
Okay, first of all. Give everyone attention.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Scudder, I'm a pastor at the church, and president of Dayspring Bible College and Seminary, which is in Mundaline, Illinois, and we're seeking to get a zoning change for the property that was formerly known as CFI Industries, and basically vacant, and vandalized for, I think about ten years. So, it seems to me like it is a attraction for vandalism and crime, as you'll see today in the presentation. Go ahead and go to the second slide, and this is just to show you a little bit about who we are. The church is right up Witten Road, Jason's Hallton Woods. The current college campus is up Fairfield Road, if you know Lakewood, Forest Reserve, we're surrounded by that Forest Reserve. It is a beautiful fourteen acre campus, we owned it for twelve years, it was a distressed property when we bought it, it was in very poor shape, and we got it on a short sale, invested a lot of time and effort into it, and it's become a beautiful place. We're projecting in a couple of years to be out of room, we're currently not out of room, so this property that is on the bottom right is the twenty-six acre property, and it actually has a few more acres to it that are part of the road, Salem Lake Road, that goes into that. So, just to get a little idea why we're interested in it, is because it's closer and it's twice the size, which gives us the ability to grow. Alright, go to the next slide. This is the property we're talking about, you can see Route twenty-two on the top, and Cuba Road on the bottom, and right to the west of Salem Lake is the reserve at Salem Lake it's currently branded as. And it's vacant, it's in really, really horrible shape currently. Next slide is a little tighter view of the property. The building is a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, this is a schematic of the inside of the building. You have two main, top right is a basement below, the blue on the left, and then there's a third floor above the left side of the building, so it's sizable, it's a really, really big. The structure of the building itself, I think, is sound, builds really well, and, but, the windows, over half of them are broken out, many are not boarded up, and there's evidence of fire and graffiti, and graffiti, of course, inside. Okay, the next one. So, what we're looking to do is help this village improve a distressed property that I think is attracting crime, and provide us a beautiful campus to, to continue our mission as a Bible college and seminary. I don't think you'll ever find a greater group of young people than our students, they're very well vetted, and they're a very unique group of young people, because they're wanting to dedicate their lives to God and study for ministry, all we do is ministry degrees, so, next slide. This is our current property, if you can play, that's a video, if you can play that video, it'll show you a little bit about what we have now. It's fourteen acres, it has academic buildings, dormitories, gymnasium, kitchen, and some staff housing. And we've been around for over forty years, we have about a hundred and forty students enrolled currently, and about forty of those are distant, so they're not on site, they're different places around the world. So, that leaves us with around a hundred on-site students. So, they're not all residents, by the way, some live in housing in the community, so right now, we, we house about a hundred and, around a hundred students at the property itself. This is all the current college property. We also use the church, which is where they do athletics, and they do music, and they do other things, so we share some of the property with the church. So, we've taken a derelict property and revitalized it and made it beautiful, kept it perfect, and that's kind of our, our model, that's what we try to do, next slide. We were founded in nineteen eighty-two, it's, our graduates are sought after all over the world, they're literally all over the world, just amazing, amazing people, next slide. Alright, so here's our problem. I'm not a resident of Long Grove, but I was walking the path of Harris Creek, and my wife and I love that Forest Reserve, it's absolutely beautiful. Started to notice this big building, I don't really know what it was, but I started to see graffiti on it, and I figured, this is long growth, what in the world is that doing on a building in long growth? And so you can see that these are current pictures we've taken recently of just a building that's not, not in repair at all, and I would love to see how that could, could be made beautiful again, next slide. This is also a video showing you the conditions of the building, if you wanna play that video, it's just a little drone shot of taken recently. And all the places that you see the wood, those are all broken out windows, vandalized, I, you know, the, the police department probably has records, but dozens and dozens of times, and so these are people that are coming from distances because it's become a viral video destination, come and see it and vandalize it. So, you can just see how much damage is being done to the building, and there's, there's a few places that are not boarded up that are broken. This is the inside, this is another video, if you wanna play that, it shows you the condition of the inside. You see all the broken glass, that was a beautiful glass railing around the steps. Next slide. This is the current campus, we've, we have experienced in revitalizing and making something that was pretty poor shape, very beautiful again, next slide. Again, the inside currently on the left, what it used to look like on the right, what it can look like, again, that, you know, it's a dated interior, but it's beautiful inside, or was, and now you can see what it looks like today, next slide. Same, what it used to look like and what it looks like right now. So, what our plan is to, if we get the zoning change, which we would have to have in order to purchase it, is to do a full interior and exterior renovation, and that would occur in two stages. We would initially need to add into the building dormitories, rooms, classrooms, and then remodel existing offices, kitchen, and eating area. We want to accommodate up to three hundred students and staff upon completion of the final phase. The initial phase would be to just accommodate the current student load that we have right now, so let's say around a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five is about what we would need initially. And we don't really know when that second phase would be needed, it would just depend on our growth and all of that. We wanna restore the original landscape design, it was just beautiful the way they had it, CFI Industries, and you saw how overgrown and how terrible it looks. We don't believe we would add any students to local schools, because most of the students are single that would come to our college, there are a few married students, if they have children, though, they would put them into our schools, which we have, we run a large preschool school as well. Very little impact on roads, it would be less impact than the property used to have ten years ago as an office building, because some of the students don't have vehicles, and we run a bus to the church and back to the college as needed, as a lot of our students have in churches at the church. And the lighting. And the lighting would be no different than before, maybe even less because of new technology and lighting and stuff like that. Next slide. That's the interior plan, on the right side you see a potential dorm room layout, and we would just add those as needed throughout the building, pending approval of all of that.
I'm sorry, can you just, not to belabor, but can you help me understand what that means? You would put a dorm room layout into the footprint of the existing?
Right, so we're not.
Kind of like figure out the pieces in Lego?
Right. We are just initially thinking about this, we don't have a good plan yet, but it's 120,000 square feet, our current campus is 50,000. So there's lots of room, even if we just take half and refurbish half, the whole outside will look new. But we would leave, so where we put those, we don't know yet, it would all depend on zoning and planning and all of those things, but we're looking to, again, accommodate about 300 residential students and staff.
So in this particular drawing, you show like the basement, first floor, labeled dorms and the kitchen and everything, what happens to the right or the left side of that building?
Right, so, so we believe that in order to make this financially feasible, we would want to do it in the two phases. So whether we just take the whole thing, again, all the outside will look good right away. The inside, we would either take half, because this building was built in two phases, this might be easier to see. You see the lighter blue in the bottom, that's the first floor, the darker blue is the newer building. So CF built the first headquarters, I think in the 70s, and then they added on in the 80s. And there's a fire door between the two, and there's, it's tall, it's a little bit taller, although you can't really see that from the outside, and it has the basement, the black outline is underneath the west side. So we would take half, whether it be that half or that half, initially, in order to renovate it with the funds that we currently have, a little raise, and we wouldn't, we would do the inside above the other part, that's our initial thought.
Thank you. Final question, so the 300 students, does that contemplate the rise onto this, or is that?
It would be the entire facility.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, that would, that would not accommodate 300 and half, it would have to be the entire place. So we're talking about maybe 125 in the first phase, which would be one side or the other, or we do, we just pull off areas and use the whole building, we don't know yet, but about half of the building inside is what we want to remodel initially. Last slide, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions. So I feel like since this property has deteriorated so much, and I believe it's a, it's something that's attracting bad actors into the community, I think that we have a solution for you. We're currently doing fine where we're at, this is not anything that we need to do, but we saw the building in late spring, and we just felt like this could be something that's, it's a beautiful property, you see the lake, you see the solitude of it, and we've also talked to a few neighbors, the immediate neighbors, there's a subdivision to the west, and some of the neighbors are here actually that we talked to about what we're doing, and I hope this would be an appropriate time to hear from them on this, or if we want to do that later. But the neighbors we've spoke to are very wanting something good to happen from this, and they've all assured us that they're really in favor of this, and like, really in favor, up to the point of saying that the homeowners' association would likely pass a resolution to support us. Again, those are the close neighbors on the one side. We also, my wife and I also did pass out flyers today, and it looks like you've got one, so I'm glad to hear that. And that's not something we needed to do, it's something that we wanted to initiate a conversation and answer questions that people have, and we already got one text from that that said, hey, we're really excited about this, and I'm 100% behind it. So all the neighbors in the subdivision closest got those, and then some of the neighbors on the lake that could see the property got those. And so our response has been overwhelmingly positive with the neighbors too, because I think they know something needs to happen, and it seems like the office market is really, really bad, and that's really the only market I think that they would have. So anyways, any questions?
Okay. Okay. Sorry. Are the students year-round student residents, or are they September to?
We have a normal college school year, so late August through April. Some will stay on for summer programs or internships, but I'd say our population decreases by about half in the summer, so a lot of them go home.
Okay, based on a number of 300, I mean, maybe it's a little preliminary, but how many cars would be?
The facility also has a parking garage, it's built where it blends in real nicely, because there's actually a three-level concrete parking garage, and I believe there's room for 400 cars for CF Industries. We would have way less, I mean, if you're talking 300 students, probably half of them don't have cars, the freshmen, most of them don't, we also have some master students that don't, and so if I were to take a guess at the 300, it would be maybe half of them at the most, 150. So I don't think we'd ever fill up the parking.
Can you describe any special events that might take place that would increase the flow of traffic in and out of the property?
It is almost all the time a college, an only college. We've had a few events where we have community event, where we invite people to come in, open houses, we want people to see what we're doing. Some Sunday nights at our current college, we've had outdoor services for the community where everyone wants to come out and have singing and, you know, testimonies and things like that. That's on, really a rare occasion, but those have happened on our old property, we would love to do that on this property as well, but it's 95%, 98% just college.
Are you thinking something like a soccer tournament?
No.
Well, yeah, something like that. That would be a normal college thing, but I don't.
Right, yeah, we have very light athletics, we don't have a soccer team, we do an annual soccer game though, just in terms of.
Oh, no, I was really more thinking about the left half of this building than just the whole end, right?
The petition came back and said, we got half of a vacant building, we want to do something to fix that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we would have no other plans to entertain anything else other than our college, we don't really want to share it.
Hey, there was a question, it was Chris, right, that you were asking about, you know, thinking this is like a typical college dorm, right? So can you describe the type of people that would go to this school, and what they would be doing outside, and noise, and et cetera?
They are college kids, but they're not your normal college kids, these are all young people that have a college to serve, and, not to say that there's never any noise, because they're college kids, and if there is a soccer game, you'll hear, just a soccer game. But I can't imagine a better group of people with respect to community, respective neighbors, than our, than our students. So I can't imagine how there would ever be an issue with that.
It's not like there's going to be a sorority, and there's going to be drinking and things like that, right?
Students can't, so, can't drink, and, I don't know, there's nothing wild, there's no loud music, it's just, they're really good.
And can't drink because?
It's a policy at our house.
Oh, okay. Independent of their age group.
Right, okay, I see, thank you.
So would you, do you plan to change the school that's serving them?
We, right, it's unincorporated Mundaline, we would probably, most likely sell it, because we can't automate two, three campuses. What we have to, we couldn't do that until this was ready, so we'd have to have an overlap of two college properties until that one's ready, and then we'd move and sell.
Is it fair to ask how, how is staying financed?
Yeah, so a decent amount would be from sale of property, we also have a benefactor that actually lives in Long Grove and has a business here, who is willing to do eight interest free, I don't know if I should say it, but I'm going to, three and a half million dollar loan. So, so we know we have the financing, plus we don't have any debt on the church property or the college property, so we're, we're really good financial situation, plus we have 500,000 in reserves to do this as well. So that plus fundraising, because we believe this is going to be at least $7 million total to purchase, to renovate. The building needs all the mechanicals, it needs new roof, not the whole thing, but a lot of roofing work, of course, all the glass, it's a half million dollars of glass that's been broken. So that pains me when I walked in there to see it, all the value that's been lost by it just sitting there.
The building has really good quality.
It does.
I've been in that building six or seven times, it's beautiful.
Right, everyone that knows buildings, they say what you just said.
Absolutely.
They did it right, and that all is really good shape.
It was very well-sighted for its site.
Yes.
One of the things, I mean, we had a previous boardman who really wanted to keep it office for some reason, people have come and said they were daunted by bringing it up to code, that is part of the planning commission, but, you know, have, you feel comfortable with your eyes wide open on that?
We've done a lot of research in the last few months, and we've been in extensively with our staff and with experts, and it's going to be a lot. We know there's at least $2 million of bringing the building itself back, and then we need to remodel it, of course, to buy it, so that's where we find the six, seven million dollar figure. It, you know, like, the fire sprinkler system looks pretty good, although there's some broken ice maybe that froze, and we believe all the new heads will have to be, all the heads will have to be replaced. We have a lot of experience building our current church building in Lake Zurich, and updating the college out in Mundaline, so we know, we know prices, we know the new prices too, since COVID. So I think we have a really good assessment of all that, and a good plan to make it happen. The biggest hindrance will be zoning. Without zoning, we don't want it.
Online here, trustee Jamil or trustee Tanucci, do you have any questions or comments?
I have none at this time, thank you.
Okay, got it.
We do have the closest neighbor who's here, Bob, would you want to say anything?
Yes, I do. Thank you. My wife, Rebecca, my name is Bob Steinmar, I'm a resident of the Glenstone subdivision. As Jim said, we are immediately located to the west of the reserve or CF Industries, as you will. I spoke about a year ago here in front of this board about the situation at CF Industries. I want to say that we firmly believe that the development that's being proposed would be an asset to the community, I think this is something that would fit in very well. I don't know about any of you in the room, but personally, my wife and I are rather sick and tired of being on a first name with most of the county sheriff's department. They're a very, very great group, they've responded immediately, but having to place calls at 2:00 in the morning, because we have groups of six or seven people trespassing on our property, tearing down fences that belong to CF Industries, and wrecking what was a beautiful building, it is a shame that we have the land that property don't succeed, so to speak. Again, I think what's being proposed will be an asset to the community, my wife and I totally support that, and I believe our association, we have two officers from the association, I believe that when it comes to a vote in our subdivision, you'll find unanimous support for it as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the thought. Keith, do you want to make any comments about what's happening there right now, just for everyone to be aware of it?
I think the last time we ran statistics, Chris, was it 28 times?
In July.
In, in July, that the church office responded there for people trespassing on the property, particularly during the evening hours, and yes, it is, it's been posted on social media, someone said that it was a black ops FBI site, so groups of kids or young adults that clocked there and wanted to make their own YouTube videos of the building or to vandalize it. So the whole kernel of the property we know has gone through different cycles of adding security measures, we just installed cameras on the property, which has increased our number of responses there, so you don't have to call anymore, they see them on camera. So.
We're there all the time, the building's collapsed, the fire department, as I know, won't go inside the building because of the state that it's in. And if I could just adjust real quick, the property that Dayspring currently owns in unincorporated Mundaline was a problem area for us, dilapidated buildings, and I don't, off the top of my head, I don't think that the sheriff's office has responded there at all for any problems the last year, six, five, 12 years, 12 years, 12 years?
Yeah. Rest my heart, and I can't remember anything.
Thank you for that. I mean, so tonight, what would happen, right, is if the board was agreeable, is it would be a referral to the plan commission, and then a formal application would have to be submitted and everything, and it would go through a public hearing and formal process, right? So tonight, we're not deciding anything, the only thing we would be deciding is do you want to refer this project, this proposal to the plan commission?
Do you need a formal motion to do this, sir?
We would need a formal motion.
All right, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so.
Is there any other question?
Yeah, I think, and it's kind of a specific slash general question, this is a huge building, like three acres under a building physically. The current owner, I believe, had planned to rehab it, and it got the thing over his head, I think.
Because it was worse than what he thought or what he had anticipated.
And with a building like this, it would be great to have a lot of time there, obviously. If you only get half of it completed, I mean, $7 million is probably going to be dropped in the book.
I don't, yeah.
But with the parts that you want, that you need and want to do first, if you don't get it second.
So I guess the question is, if, what if we can never get to phase two? We're not going to ever have a building, that's an embarrassment, because we represent God, and we try to really make sure everything's really nice, so the building will always look beautiful, it'll be safe, even if we haven't refinished it, I'm sure that the board will ensure that it's a safe building. So it will be a dangerous building, the part that's not finished. I feel very confident that we'll complete the entire project, and we, you know, fundraising goes well, we'll just do the whole thing at once, but this is our initial plan, we know for sure we can do this, and so that's kind of the way we would go forward, is try to save a little of the renovation money for second phase.
Yeah. You know, I have no problem putting it before the plan commission. My, my serious concern is that when CF Industries went full, they would have to solve it their morning, night, rush hour, direct traffic, and just took the left. It sounds like you wouldn't have that kind of volume.
To that, because he brought that up, I think, I'm John Speed, the Long Grove, Frank and I are both on the board at Glenstone. What was it approved for CF Industries? How many, I mean, obviously, 450, pardon, sorry, what was the number?
He was guessing 400.
It's only 400, pardon.
Okay, so you had 400 that it was approved for, and obviously, I've only lived here since 2014, so I don't know what the traffic or foot traffic was back then.
It was full, the building was full. It was huge.
Okay, but, so all of that, the traffic was from the 450 cars on the street?
Yeah.
And so you had answered, 150 cars when it's complete, or what number do you assume is complete?
Yeah, way less than what it currently is. I don't really know that number, but I would say one in three of our students have cars, and we do have a shuttle bus, so.
And they're not leaving every day and coming back.
Right, right, right. A lot of them will stay put. Another thing I think that could help is the widening of 22, I know that's kind of the talk, whatever happened, but that should really help intersection. One thing that might really help us is, most of the people would be. One thing that might really help us is most of the people would be coming to the church from the college. And you can easily turn right, which is much easier than trying to turn left on a busy time, and just take only a minute. So that's probably what people would do if it gets busy during those heavy traffic times.
Potentially on Sunday, graduation, whatever.
Yeah, all this is the church, though.
We've been promised.
Keith raising his hand. He's got information.
Oh, go ahead.
When the sheriff's office was out there directing traffic to, we also had the building in Temple Lake.
Oh, yes, that's right.
That was fully occupied as well. So that was congested, and then even though it's half occupied right now.
No, the church is pretty.
But I think the point was made here is that you're talking about a fraction of the cars coming and going.
I think so.
And then I don't know what the time of the day is. Is it rush hour time or is it out of rush hour?
I would say it's all during the day, so I doubt that there's an impact at rush hour. And again, it's currently approved. I mean, we could buy it today and use it for offices and have 400 cars there. So what we're doing is we're saying, would you let us take it over and have like half of that? So I think the traffic is definitely going to be much better.
Would it be fair to say that if I drove over to Mundeline campus, rush hour, middle of the day, whatever, the traffic going in and out of that would be comparable to what?
It would be exactly the same.
Okay.
It's very sporadic.
Well, except you're smaller now.
Right, but that's the size we would initially be. Probably for the first several years, we would be the size we are now.
You can count on that, she will drive.
And I would love, I would love for any of you.
It's wonderful that she does.
To come, to come see it. We would love to do that if you want to come see her. You know, if it gets down the road, we'll pervert any of you who want to.
So we have a motion by trustee Brodsky, second by trustee Kritzmeyer, to refer this to the plan commission. On zoning board of appeals.
I can be a voice phone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Dr. Jamil, I can't hear you. Were you an aye or a nay or?
Aye.
All right, so motion carried. Thank you, thank you.
That's the first time somebody's said, I represent God.
All right, consideration. All right, consideration of waiving the 120-day waiting period for demolition permit for a single-family home on the side of the proposed new fire station located at 5159 and 5161 Apptecisic Road. Any questions?
I'll move to approve that. The request that we consider changing our 120-day waiting policy to something more reasonable.
Yeah, the whole thing was to give in.
I know.
That's right, I'm sorry. I forgot what it said.
Okay, so moved by trustee Brodsky, second by trustee O'Connor. Roll call because it involves money.
Trustee Brodsky.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor. Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried.
Thank you. But I don't know what that middle ground is. I knew there was a middle ground in this one, 60 days, 120.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
No problem. Now play a joke on me. Will you tell Paul that we didn't pass it and see what? Would you do this for me? You got to record it.
I have a question, and it is, it's only slightly related. It's only slightly related.
Uh-oh.
No, it's, no. What are the plans for re-burming or doing anything at the end of Arlington High Road?
What do you mean, the plans for re-burming?
Arlington High Road was closed at Apptecisic like several decades ago.
Right.
With the widening of it.
Oh, yeah, what are the?
Doing all of that, it's flat. And there are lots of cars that go.
Oh, yes.
Through there, and they're going to end up in your front driveway.
That's a question for Jeff. I don't know if you remember what the plan shows, right, so.
It's concerning the neighbors also, and also.
And that's reasonable, yeah. We also thought about that as well. And we don't know what the plan is, or we haven't heard of anything.
You think he wanted to?
He wasn't happy.
Oh, yeah, he forgot his easel.
I mean, I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, because like, there is true concern that somebody will like take a good four-wheeler and go. And they'll land in your front yard.
Yeah, right, yeah. If we hear rumors, we can share that.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, thank you. Still play that joke, though, will you please? Get a rise out of them, then tell them the truth. All right.
With the widening of Apptecisic, apparently, the berm has been obliterated. And.
Yes.
You're concerned that people will just drive and not realize that they.
Because they already, whatever they're doing, like, I have semi trucks who go on that. And that's our lovely roadway, we own that north line. And, yeah, we're concerned that people will actually like just go off-roading and go right into Apptecisic.
Yep, there you go.
Throw in the trash.
All right.
You'd probably want that, well, I want to disrupt.
All right, so.
They already dump trash and so forth.
We'll find out, or you're going to find out, yeah. I know they're putting up some, I saw some nice new barricades that went up, or not barricades.
I saw that too.
Sound walls.
It's on the Buffalo Grove side. I don't know how far it isn't to extend.
I don't know, yeah, I was curious. I don't remember what was in the plan, so we got to find out. Good question. All right, there's another item on the agenda, consideration and purchase of a resident request software solution to automate and track requests. We used to have the old fancy spreadsheet.
Thank you.
We used to have the old fancy spreadsheet.
I'm sorry you're here again, Jane.
Kind of.
I'm sorry you're here again.
It's good to see you, though, okay?
Good to see you.
That's what she was trying to say, good to see you.
That's exactly why I'm, thank you, thank you. Good seeing everybody. Thank you for your time.
Would you take over this topic here about this software package? Okay, this is what we're talking about now.
Yeah, so this would be a resident request system that would integrate with our website. And it would allow any member of the public to access it through our website. My vision of it is that we have specific categories, which would be inclusive of like the top things that people call and request for. You know, missed garbage pickup, or a dead tree, or a branch down on the road, or a dead animal or something. You could, they would submit a request that way, it would filter through our staff here, and it could be assigned out to the appropriate party, whether that be ELA, you know, the fire department, the sheriff's office. It could even be a zoning-related question that could go to, say, Filton or Village Planner or staff here. So it would provide some, one place to go right now if they send emails to any, any one of us. And there's no centralized location for tracking. So I think it would provide some accountability and allow for quicker response times and allow us to, you know, track that. That's the request.
Can you keep, I'm sorry.
No, well, I was just going to, because I had some questions. I'll just hold that thought for a second. So right now, they're not, I mean, there's not even an Excel spreadsheet. Remember how we used to get those Excel spreadsheets of everything? So the idea is, is that now, it could be done several ways. It could be a resident calling in, and anyone that gets the phone call could put it in the system and track it. It could be somebody online. They'll have to build the software out in a way so that it's simple. And maybe they'll only take a certain amount of the requests that you put in there. But then, out of that, also will come the reporting that we'll be able to see, they'll be able to see. And you'll also, you know, they'll understand which staff person took it, et cetera. And you'll have some tracking mechanism, because you don't have that today. Today, it's just, maybe it gets resolved or maybe it doesn't, but you'll have a process for it. So that's what I see in this thing. And it wasn't clear when you look at the evaluation of all the different providers, right? And if I understand correctly, some other municipalities are now using the same lower-cost system as well to do this. So I'll let you answer your question. That's all I wanted to say, yeah.
The purpose of it is to, not hit robots, so to speak, but the staff doesn't have to keep answering the phone? Is it an alternative?
No, I don't think so, I don't think so, no. Yeah, in addition to.
In addition, so can I ask, it would be nice to add to that software, if possible? Sorry, I'm not sure. Can I go?
Yeah.
To add something, if people want to vote for some development, yes or no, like against or not against? Because like, I'm here by the way to find out the date for the next year, because a lot of people are against that gas station. And I get it that the village needs sales tax, that's normal, we all need some kind of finance, the economy. But here, I just heard about this nice building, which is going to go to the council people, and I don't know how much revenue that's going to generate for the village. So on one hand, kind of like, given away a huge building that can generate a huge revenue for nothing, and a small lot that can generate, on another hand, the sales tax has a lot of problems. Because the area where it will be built has a lot of families with small kids. But small kids kind of we can control, but teenagers, we cannot control. We cannot control those truck drivers, excuse me, who are going to come to the station and all of that. It's going to be like a chain, like a snowball effect of problems. So my point is, if you're going to do this software, and if you will be building it from scratch, in my experience, you can ask them to add or to remove something. So if you add something like, hey, here is a new plan that we are developing, what are your thoughts about it? And if we put our like first name, last name, and our address, and we can vote for it, it would be perfect. Because then we don't need to go door to door like an old school and say, hey, here's a gas station building. Do you want that gas station? Or you don't want to build that gas station? And then we still take that person, first name, last name, signature, address, all of that. And then we need to present it all to other people. So if it could be done all beforehand, then for you, as a village, you kind of have a feeling what people want, what people don't want. And on the other hand, you can kind of balance your budget.
Just as a point of information.
Yeah.
Under the constitutional protections for property rights, the village can't zone by referendum.
No, I'm just.
So, you know, getting a petition or something like that may be informative, may be persuasive, but that's not how the village can operate its zoning determinations. It's going to have to go through the statutory processes for that.
Yeah, I understand. It's like a free green, I know it's like a trailer, like a preview.
Yeah. Well, so let me do two things here. So first off, this software was to automate the basic requests that come in and have a means to track it, right? So that's what it was, probably could go beyond that. The other thing, I just want to comment on the CFI property. That was always zoned commercial, office.
Office.
And so it never generated any sales tax. I know that the guy that had purchased it was thinking maybe there would be some creative ways, but it's kind of in a weird spot for it.
No, but I'm just thinking it could be, it could be something else, it could be whatever.
It's close to.
The guy, somebody created his headquarters building, and he wanted it hidden. So it's like a long, narrow path road that goes way out in the middle of other stuff. It has like, the only frontage on any main road is the front driveway.
It's about, what, three quarters of a mile, I think, from 22 to the.
So it's, yeah, it's not an ideal property for that kind of development.
It's a really different property.
If you need money, you can find how to make money in a building.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that is fair. That particular property, that particular one is not a good trade.
Yeah, I'm not going to finger, I'm just, yeah, I'm curious, I'm curious.
Automate, so automate is kind of a misleading word to use right off the bat. Because I think that's, you know, what the worry is, is that it sounds like, you know, when we say automate, like we're trying to take that. No, I know, I know, I know. I'm just saying, so automate is just kind of the first step, is it automates it. By, right, by, that's the first step, is getting it in the system. So the first thing we're doing is getting, is automating the first step of it, is getting that request in the system from there. So it does automate it right away, get that request in the system, so it's not, you know, having it where it's written down. We're right away, the most important thing, we're not getting it in the system. So we're not getting it where we have it where they say, you know, they called five times and they feel like no one heard it. You know, that's the biggest, the biggest issue is we have these people where we hear that, you know, I called and called five times, or I've been doing this. So that's really the key to where the automate comes in, is that that first time they contact, we get it in the system, and we get a ticket number like when, you know, you call tech services or something. So right away, that issue, it's an identifying ticket number. And that's the organization to it, where once that ticket number is in there, whoever the staff is that addresses it, the identifying thing for that issue is that ticket number. So if I start it and work with it first, and then Chris is the next one to do it, if that person has that ticket number for that issue, Chris knows right away what's been done with it and the issues with it, and can build on it, or whoever's next with it. So that organization key is in there. So it's great for that purpose for the future. But that really helps, so that person too feels like, not only have they been heard right away, but they know too that it's documented, and documented in some cases, they can actually see in the system what's going on with it. But they know when it's been dealt with and what's been dealt with with it. But I do see too how right away saying automated makes it sound like we're handing it over to the robots right away.
There's another question. Don't care about, oh, but, so how do things enter the system? If somebody calls Village Hall, they'll still be able to call.
Right, a person without.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry, that's right. It's, so if somebody calls, this is Village Hall, a staff member will then enter that, okay? They'll also be able to enter on the website?
Yes.
And then us being, you know, obnoxious board members and saying, please, Chris, and then you'll go enter it also? Okay, if somebody doesn't remember their ticket number, will there be another way to find them?
Yeah, we'll email or contact.
I don't know about this particular system, but many of these systems have automatic ticklers. So even if you don't remember, which, when I've called in to the one in my town, I never remember, but they still send me reminders of where the thing stands. So that's part of the, part of the process of these systems, at least as I've encountered them.
That makes sense.
So we have some identifying information, we can look it up and get a status.
Yeah, because, I mean, I've been, in my other job, like I actually gave a customer service training session to Village of Northbrook, because they're finding they had so many people who are calling in and they had some turnover, and they were concerned, they're partly concerned their population is aging, and people would call the village, and 10% of the call was village conflict, and then 90% was people who needed just to be heard.
No, I don't mean to make it sound like we're going to be.
We do.
Yeah, that we're going to be saying, well, you don't have a ticket number, you can't. That's just more of the, yeah, the ticket number is more just to keep track for that.
So here's the thing, it's 3,500 hours. Chris could just decide to do it. He wanted to bring it before the board to make everyone aware. So what questions do you have?
That's the part I'm not clear on. It, apparently, it is, it's 3,500.
It's annual, yes, a subscription.
Apparently, there's a licensing fee that's almost like seven grand or something.
No.
That was a different vendor.
Different vendor. There's all the ones here, the top one for 3,500.
The engineering thing where we got all the bits.
Yeah, so I didn't read them all, so just so you know, I chose not to read them. The recommendation was for this one for 3,500 hours. They said it was the best one, other municipalities are using it, it's low cost. And I said, try it out, see if it works.
And what, it's 3,500.
3,500, yeah, 3,500.
Theoretically, is this in second year, 3,500 or inflation or whatever?
They have no annual increase in there.
No annual increase?
Just like our licensing Microsoft, I'm sure.
Not to say they won't ever inflation adjust, but.
Okay, and what kind of history gets retained if a year from now you go, you know, this is a good system, let's pop over to this one?
We can export any data in there. It's exportable into like a CSV file that we can use to import into any other system.
So really, it's just like, you know, you call Amazon, they have your whole history on the screen in front of them. They talk to seven different people, basically, that's what it is.
Yep. Do you remember when we interviewed him?
Yes.
This was one of his ideas.
I remember that.
Did you verbalize that?
I remember that.
You did?
No, I remember that.
I remember that.
That's an idea today.
Kent, you, what, Kent? Yeah, I remember that. I remember Chris talking about this. So, so I was trying to implement it now.
It, it, it's really, it's a fancy spreadsheet for retaining all the good stuff with some other additional stuff, like Dana said, everybody, everybody has, if, no matter who's in the office, they can see it.
Yes.
Yeah, I can see the benefit to that, you know, because you're working in close quarters now, but, and we will for a real part, but I, I can see that, that would be very time efficient.
Does staff need to access it from these premises, or can they get to it from home?
It's web-based.
It's web-based, okay.
It's their mobile app, too. That might be. I don't know.
Well, I, I know, like, in the Evanston one, I, they have a portal on their website, and I can access it, and I think I can just plug in my address, because I don't remember my ticket, um, and get, and get the, and get the update on what my request had been.
Is there a question there?
So.
I, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, me too.
I think it's a great idea.
However, like, one of the things you mentioned was reporting, and I think that if the public was able to, to see, like, what kind of issues were, were submitted, and sort them, the average time of resolution.
That's, I guess.
But basically, when they build it from scratch, developers can do it, like, I've built, I've worked with developers, so wherever you ask them, they will deliver.
The issue is, this is public. Not resident only, so, if it was, I don't, I don't really care if somebody comes, buried and thinks about something we're gonna do.
Well, it's, like, if somebody puts an address in, it's a long rope address, you know, if it's not a long rope address, somebody else in the ministry could just mark it as not.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't respond to it.
That's not what I'm, that's not what I'm trying to.
We would be, I, I think the reporting capabilities could be to report on the high-level, um, categories, if you will, with the date of resolution, would be a useful report.
Yeah, I'd like to see how, my things, I'd like to see the details of my progress, if you will, but I agree, there's no level of, you want it reasonably anonymous, and also, and also some level of, like, reports and stuff that we can change.
I didn't quite, I mean, you're talking corporate versus.
Yeah.
Do you want, do you want to finish your thought? Go ahead, go for it. No, please. All right, I was trying to.
I'll ask some questions and make some comments, maybe, maybe you're, you know, something. I was very well-prepared tonight to say, yeah, we need to do this, until Dana tried to sell me on the ticket number.
Oh, jeez.
I didn't get a deal of the ticket number, some companies do a great job with a follow-up on, as I say, now, other companies, you talk to, many people, and nobody can cite what's really going on with the ticket, except for reading on the screen now. I hope we're small enough and communicating between our staff members that we're the former, not the latter, because to me, that's important. Question for Vic, so it's all foiaable, can I have a, so if a resident complains about something, that's all foiaable?
Well, I mean, you're gonna have to first make a foia that's going to be within a request, it's gonna still have all of the redactions for personal information and the like.
Okay.
Um, but that, you know, things that I had. My, my garbage, uh, lid was broken, so I contacted the city through this, and they gave me an update as to when I'd be able to get the repair. Um, and I, I, I will say, I'm pretty impressed at how it's happened in Evanston, I know one of our other clients has a similar, uh, utilization, and, uh, I know that Grace Lake has, has had it, another one of our clients, and it seems to be a good tool to let community members contact the municipality, and to have the municipality be able to keep track of what's going on.
See, that's what I want, I want that, Dana, I want to know this calling in, I want to know the whole.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know what kind of, uh, reports it can provide, uh, Chris no doubt can give you more about that, but the, the fact is that the information comes in, as far as what can be obtained from a foia request, it's gonna be subject to the, the typical type of redactions for any kind of private information.
So if a building inspector goes out to check on whatever, how does that data that the inspector looked at the complaint and said, eh, that's not our property, it's just a property, how does that get input back into the system? I mean, when you said there's, when you reacted like you did to the mobile app, that kind of shocked me, I thought, that'd be like a perfect application for the building guy to go, oh, picture a broken tree branch, clicks, send, goodbye, right? How does it all integrate, Chris, does it integrate?
So there, there's no mobile app for the version that I'm requesting, or that we're requesting, but there's some other, other that were quoted in there that do have that, uh, but this is web-based, so you go on the village website on your phone, for example, um.
So the building guy goes, broken tree branches in ours, he comes back to Margarita, Margarita asks him, what is it, is that how it works?
He could, or he'll get, once the request is assigned to him, he'll get an email, and the request, the link to the request will be in the email that he'll click and open up, and then he'll, he can attach a picture, he can write an internal comment, he can write an external comment that goes to the person that submitted the request, and internally.
So can and will are different words, right, so will he or can he? I mean, do we have a requirement that our building inspector guy go with the broken tree branch is going to do that, or? No, he's going to do that, or, I mean, what's, what's his obligation to actually do that?
Yes, I said, maybe, because I don't know that we want the inspector to contact that, or if we want our staff internally to respond, but.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm still all for this, I'll.
Okay, moved by trustee Broowski?
I, I think, I think.
Seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer?
And the culture and processes are different.
No, no.
Um, that's a roll call vote, because it involves money.
Trustee Broowski?
Yes.
Aye. Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Aye.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried.
Thank you.
Village Engineers Report, um, who's giving that report? There's no engineer. Anything that anyone wants to talk about? That's nothing, okay. Um, Village and trustee reports, um, I don't have a report tonight, what about trustee Broowski?
Um, we are still working with staff very closely on the, um, the study and the strategy for the contract renewal, which is scheduled to be, our current contract expires at the end of March, so we're currently working with staff to, uh, work on a strategy for discussions and ways of, and, uh, there will be more information coming.
They did.
Who did switch to? Thank you.
All right, thank you for that report. Thank you for that report, end of report?
Thank you, end of report, thank you.
Trustee Jamil, anything?
I don't have.
Okay, uh, trustee Kritzmeyer? Trustee O'Connor? Sure? Okay. Oh, jeez. Hey, trustee, do you have, uh, trustee Tanucci, do you have anything?
No report.
All right, Village Managers Report?
No report.
There's no reason for executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourned.
Okay, moved, moved by trustee Broowski, seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Meeting adjourned, good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.